I call the October 4th, 2011 meeting of the Eden Prairie City Council to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like to welcome everybody to the meeting this evening, but especially it looks like we have some students from the high school, so welcome. I think you're lucking out a little bit. It's a bit shorter meeting than normal, so yay.[37.04][37.04](laughter) It's typical that the mayor, who is away from us this evening, but she would read a general announcement about open podium, so I will also do that. Open podium is an opportunity for Eden Prairie residents to address the city council on issues related to the Eden Prairie city government before each council meeting. Typically, the first and third Tuesday of each month, from 6:30 to 6:55 PM here in the council chamber. If you wish to speak at open podium, please contact the city manager's office at 952-949-8412 by noon of the meeting date with your name, phone number, and subject matter. If time permits, after scheduled speakers are finished, the mayor will open the floor to unscheduled speakers. Open podium is not recorded or televised. If you have questions about open podium, please contact the city manager's office. So tonight, we have a couple proclamations and presentations, so I'll turn this over to our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We do, we have a couple presentations tonight, grants and donations in the area of pickleball and with our senior center, and I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Lothammer to present these.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. The first one, this is actually the second time you've seen a grant from the United States of America Pickleball Association, so this is our second opportunity, and this goes towards equipment. We have been playing pickleball, and I can say "we" because myself and the city manager somewhat looked foolishly at their grand opening as we tried to keep up with the seniors who are much more practiced than us, but it is, what I've described as sweeping the nation, and it is definitely the case, and it's growing not only here, but also other communities around us like Bloomington, Minnetonka. Last week, I got a call from the director up in Fridley asking to come down and see how our courts are set up and what we've been doing to organize and grow this sport. And to be honest, we've only been helping and facilitating. It's the seniors, from the senior center, that have really been self-organizing, and we've been helping them with courts and some striping and grants of this sort. I did want to show you, this is from the 2011 pickleball tournament that was between Bloomington and Eden Prairie, and it's actually a nice booklet with a lot of the pictures of all the players that are in, that were in the tournament. So, they are a well-organized group of people. We started out with just a few. It started out two mornings a week with a couple hours at a time. It is almost every day, all morning into the afternoon and some evenings. We have over 100 people that are on our list interested in pickleball that we send updates to. So, we see it as growing. Last year, they went inside to the community center over the winter time. Same thing is about to happen now as soon as the weather stops being so nice outside. But almost every morning during the summertime, you can go out behind the senior center at Pioneer Park and see this group of very active people, and it's a very welcoming group. If you show up and look halfway interested, they'll grab your arm and put a paddle in your hand, and you will be playing pickleball and having a good time with them. So, we're happy that we can obtain some more grant dollars to continue to support them.
Great. We need a motion, Council. What's your pleasure?
Move to accept the USAPA grant awarded to the city of Eden Prairie in the amount of $250 to be used towards the purchase of two nets for the outdoor pickleball courts located in Pioneer Park.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Second, don't-
Mr. Mayor, I must say, I've been approached by a number of seniors that have said thank you to the city for the pickleball courts, that they wanted us to know that they really like having pickleball, and maybe we should even consider doing another court worth. That seems to be quite a big deal for a lot of active seniors.
You know, with lacrosse and other sports emerging, we do a pretty good job here of evolving as we need to and meeting our needs, so I agree, as the need arises, I think we should do that.
Just to give a quick response to that, we are working with them. Pickleball is played on a traditional tennis court, but you can actually get several courts on a tennis court by re-striping it, playing kind of sideways. And so, if we, what we've been working with them is, how do we expand to more courts? Is it to dedicate some courts that may not be used as frequently for tennis, because we've got, I think the number is 38 tennis courts throughout the city? And so, do we dedicate some, or do we make some additional courts, multi-purpose as well? So, we've been in contact with the association. We're actually bringing it to the Parks Commission in November to have a discussion on that, and then we'll, by the time they're ready to go outside, we'll be ready with a way to do it. I can't tell you tonight what is the way, but we'll be ready with a way to accommodate them. The other thing that we are seeing is, originally, because we were fairly responsive, this core group of Eden Prairie players told their friends about how fun it was, and their friends might have been from Bloomington, Minnetonka, Chanhassen, and so some of our initial fast growth was also from other cities. And so, as those cities have started to come onboard with pickleball courts, some of those people, we're seeing a higher percentage of our pickleball players now going back to being residents. But with that said, it is still growing by leaps and bounds, and we've only really experienced the growth in the senior population, and I think as Mr. Getchell and I can attest, anybody of any age would enjoy playing this. So, I think we will see more of this in our park system over the next couple of years.
Do we have used data to show which of the 38 tennis courts are underutilized and which ones are being utilized?
No, we-
Is there a way to get that? Probably pretty hard.
It's difficult. You'd have to have more of a survey group than we actually, we don't do that for accounting purposes.
All right, Mr.-
Yeah, I think they might like some permanent pickleball nets where they didn't have to take them in and out, too.
Yes, that's a high priority, yeah.
Mr. Lothammer, the next donation, actually, presentation, whatever, is in memory of Ruth Dover for the senior center?
Yes, Ruth Dover, she was a resident and a very active person at the senior center, and she unfortunately passed away, and her family asked that memorials be directed towards the senior center for use for supporting the senior center or programs that take place there. We're suggesting that it would be to help us purchase some AV equipment for one of the meeting rooms as the method for using the donation.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I'd move to accept the donation of $720 in the memory of Ruth Dover to be used towards the purchase of new audiovisual equipment at the Eden Prairie Senior Center.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, approval of the agenda, is there a motion?
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any items to add or change? Okay, all those in favor of the agenda as is, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the minutes from the council workshop held Tuesday, September 20th, 2011, is there a motion for, motion for approval?
Move approval.
Second.
Any items to question? All those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The second, the city council meeting held Tuesday, September 20th, 2011, item B.
Move approval of the minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any items to question? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we have no reports of advisory boards and commissions, consent calendars, is there a motion for approval? Before we make the motion, are there any items that anybody would wish to have pulled temporarily or moved to another part of the agenda? Okay, is there a motion for approval?
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
And, we need a voice vote on that. Correct? Is it?
Not a roll call.
Oh, not a roll call. Roll call's on the money, sorry.
Correct.
I got it, sorry. I was confused. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, moving on. So we have no public hearings tonight, payment of claims. That one, we need a motion.
Well, we're not-
And a second, and-
We're not there yet, are we?
Yeah.
We are.
Aren't we?
Item 10.
Oh, yeah, I guess we are.
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
And we need a roll call on this one. Any, well, before that, any items at all that people want to question in the payment of claims? Okay, roll call.
Councilmember Aho?
Aye.
Councilmember Butcher-Wickstrom?
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Councilmember Case?
Aye.
All right, just moving right along here. Skipping up to item 14, reports of council members, we had none. Report of city manager. Anything in there, Rick, that you want to, tonight?
Uh, no, again, just an announcement that I think at the October 18th meeting, we'll be dealing with the budget again, as we talked about earlier, as we move toward adoption in December, so we're going to spend some time on that at the October 18th meeting, and then in November, we will be meeting with our Conservation Commission in November, as well as getting some input on a business survey that was done jointly with the city and the Chamber of Commerce. So those are some upcoming items at workshops and meetings.
Great. Okay, moving down to 14C, the report of the Community Development Director, Ms. Jeremiah.
Mayor and council members, I'm before you tonight to ask you to approve a new lease between the city and Geneca for a consignment retail store. It's Encore, which is currently located in the Lariat Center next to Green Mill and has been in operation for 20 years, and would be relocating to our property at 8022 Den Road. And the lease would occupy a little over 2,600 square feet, and the term would be for seven years with the option to renew for three additional years. And there would be kind of an escalator clause with regard to the amount of rent. It would initially be $23 a square foot for the first two years, go up to 25 for years three to five, 27 for years six to seven, and if they do exercise the option, it would go up to 29 for the seven to 10-year timeframe. And the tenants would actually be finishing the retail space. We would be constructing the mising walls, removing carpet, and providing electrical service. The tenant would also pay the common area maintenance, the taxes, and insurance. And I'll certainly take any questions you have.
Council, questions?
I do have a question.
Yes.
Ms. Jeremiah, I know, in looking at the reviewing the plans, there's about 1,012 square feet that were shown as just kind of in a hatch mark. I assume that that is not going to be leased, and is that going to be just open space? And assuming that's the case, do we have any plans for, for that? I mean, is it still a leasable amount of space, or is it too small to really be marketable?
Mayor and councilmember Aho, actually, that is marketable, and there is a hair salon that's very interested in that space right now, so it's very likely I'll be coming back with another lease agreement for a hair salon in that space.
Perfect. Thank you.
Other questions?
This is not a public hearing, so I would entertain a motion to approve the lease agreement with Geneca LLC.
I would move to approve a new lease between the city of Eden Prairie and Geneca LLC for a consignment retail store called Encore at the city-owned commercial property at 8022 Den Road.
Second.
Is there any additional discussion or questions? All those in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great, moving on to the second one, Ms. Jeremiah.
Mayor and councilmembers, I'm asking you tonight to adopt a resolution supporting the city's participation in the Open to Business program and committing to funding half of the cost of $5,000 out of the Economic Development Fund. And Open to Business is a small business technical assistance program provided by the Metropolitan Consortium of Community Developers through the Hennepin County HRA, and the one-year fee is actually $10,000, whereas Hennepin County would provide a matching grant of $5,000, so again, the cost to the city would only be $5,000. And the types of services provided through the program include business plan development, feasibility studies, cash flow and financing projections, marketing, loan request preparation, and advocacy with lending institutions. And staff would work with the Chamber of Commerce to market this program in Eden Prairie, and we do expect that it would be well-received because we do have 800 to 1,000 home-based businesses that meet the small business definition, as well as a number of others that have their own space. And this program has been already implemented in Brooklyn Park, St. Louis Park, and Minnetonka with great results, and my understanding is that they will service as many businesses as come forward in Eden Prairie during that timeframe. And for example, Minnetonka has utilized 112 hours since spring of this year, so we feel that there would be a very good return on this $5,000 investment, and would help economic development throughout the city. Certainly take any questions you may have.
I don't know who's like him on first, councilmember Aho, and then we'll go to councilmember Nelson. Is that a, a little lighter?
Yeah, that's, that's fine. I was just going to ask, do you know, is there any parameters on, or limitations on the amount of time that they'll give to a particular business, because it looks like they offer quite a wide range of services? But what kind of parameters are on that, on the list of services?
I don't have the details on any parameters. My understanding, though, is that there's no absolute limit to the number of hours that they would spend in a year on our community, so they must be getting some volunteer efforts around this initiative. And, like I said, you know, we've seen quite a high utilization in Minnetonka, and that hasn't, there hasn't been a cap established or anything like that. Follow-up to this resolution, there would be a contract agreement which would likely cover those types of details, and so if you're interested, I could bring those details forward to you at a future time.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Councilmember Nelson.
Where would this be located in town, as far as where would a businessperson go? Is it through the chamber, or is it at City Hall, or is it over in the shopping center?
My understanding is that the assistance goes to the business, so wherever the business is located, the assistance would be provided directly at the business site, so whether it's in a home, or whether it's in a shopping center, they would go to the business.
Is this-
Do the shelter with the county, is that kind of what you're asking?
Well, I just wondered, you know, if they were going to have an office where people went to, but if they go there. The other question is, is there a cost to the small business, or to the potential businessperson that they're aiding, or is this free service to the small business?
My understanding is that the service to the business is free within these parameters, and that it is a small business, so a large company couldn't apply for this service. There would be an expectation that they would have their own resources.
Yeah, sounds, sounds like it's an interesting way to get some new small businesses growing a little bit.
Other questions? Comments?
No. I move to adopt the resolution supporting the city's participation in the Open to Business program and committing to funding one-half of the cost, or $5,000.
Second.
Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, moving on to the reports of Parks and Recreation Director, Mr. Lothammer.
Thank you, Your Honor. Councilmembers, you'll remember about a year ago, we were here discussing the grant project for Miller Park, and it's very similar to what we're discussing tonight. And we need council authorization in order to execute a grant application through Hennepin County. This money became available through the legislation of the funding for the Twins Stadium, approximately $2 million per year. I think we're about 18 years left on that, is available. And what we've done in the past is tried to work with our local athletic associations, and like the scenario last year with the baseball/softball association, where they came forward and said we would pay half of the project, the grant then paid the other half of the project. We received eight fields that were upgraded with players, covered players' benches, as well as new scoreboards. What the baseball association is asking for this go-around, in this grant cycle, is at the Starling Lake Park, the two grill fields next to the Cummins Grill House, is to add two batting cages plus a covered dugout to those fields. And when I say covered, it's a, it's a flat roof, but it's also enclosed with fencing, so it really helps with safety from a playability standpoint, but also some of the sun shade as well. And then, the second grant application would cover Franlow Park, which is another location that they play at, also a batting cage, also covered players' benches. So, the funding would come, as proposed, is 50% from the baseball association, 50% from Hennepin County. We, as city staff, would work again to assemble the application, submit it on behalf. If the grant was awarded, we, as city staff, would run the project and seek reimbursement at that point. So both of these next two items are virtually the same without, or with the exception of the location of where they're at.
Great. Questions? Further questions? Comments? I will entertain a motion.
Move to adopt the resolutions authorizing staff to submit a grant for the Hennepin Youth Sports Grant Program for Franlow Park baseball field improvements.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion or questions?
I'd just like to thank the baseball association for being so proactive as to help go after this. It's, it's a good public-private partnership.
Sure seems like a win-win. You bet. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the second, Mr. Lothammer, resolution is for Hennepin Youth Sports Grant Program application.
This is the same, just the location is different.
Oh.
I would move to adopt the resolution authorizing staff to submit a grant request to the Hennepin Youth Sports Grant Program for Starling Lake Cummins Grill baseball field improvements.
Is there a second? Any exhaustive discussion on this? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, moving on. Now the exciting part of the whole evening.
Yes.
The Emerald Ash Bor, Japanese Beetle update.
Yes, thank you. Last council meeting, Mayor Tyra Lukens asked for an update, and I gave a, a small update, kind of off the top of my head, but I had asked Stu Fox, who's our Parks and Natural Resources Manager, who was in school when the outbreak of the, I'm losing my train of thought, the outbreak of-
Either the ash bore or the-
No, 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 I'm sorry.
Oh, oh, yeah, I know that one. Elm, the elm one?
Dutch elm disease.
The Dutch elm.
PD, I am sorry, Dutch elm disease, and so has seen the evolution of some of this, as well as oak wilt and, and other types of diseased trees, as he's worked over his career with that. And so, he has been following this very closely. It is as close to us as Vadniss Heights area, Falcon Heights, so kind of the east metro. St. Paul was one of the first places close to us that has discovered it. What we do know is that this can stay in a dormant stage for about three years, so it can be anywhere, and you won't know it until several years later when it actually shows itself. This is, as a result, though, we are under a quarantine for Hennepin County as well as Ramsey County, and so some of the things that they then take for precautions is not moving firewood, the way that things are disposed of, and so those, I think, are important for people to know and understand. Now, this is something that is evolving. Every once in a while, we'll hear about a new outbreak in the paper and a new location, and so our actions, at least in the last year, have been to refer people to both the DNR and the Department of Agriculture, because they have the people that are keeping the closest tabs on where the outbreaks or where it might be occurring, and also that have the knowledge of the latest science in how to treat it. So, I would encourage people, our residents, they can go to our website, our forestry page, and it'll give them a direct link to the very latest information. That's how we can guarantee that it's always up to date. On the Emerald Ash Bor, we do not know and have not discovered any here in Eden Prairie. If we were to, we would certainly handle it very similar to a Dutch elm, where it is a diseased type of tree, in order to slow the process down. Where we've seen it in other parts of the country in different climates, it has spread very quickly once it hits. There's some speculation, because of our colder climate, that it may not go quite as fast, and we're not seeing it take off quite as fast. So, as I mentioned last time, we're not necessarily worried about a short period extensive decimation of trees. We don't think it will occur that way. The scientists are not recommending that you proactively take out healthy trees, so we're not recommending that. If you have ash trees, that you should take them out. You might want to start thinking about if there's a spot to plant another tree of a different type fairly close by, that could be a good idea, so that if one day, three years, five years, 15 years from now, that that tree is no more, that you have another tree that is coming up in its place. So, we continue to monitor it. At this time, we don't believe that there's any need to take immediate action. There are some golf courses around that have identified very significant ash trees to the playability of their course, to the aesthetics of their course, that are doing certain types of treatments, chemical treatments. That will help for a couple years, then you would need to do it again. It's a couple hundred to a several hundred dollars per tree to do that. There are some lawn care companies that might be recommending to people that have a significant tree in their yard, that that may be a method to either help stave it off or to keep it from happening. But again, what we know with the chemicals that are there today, this is a treatment that has to continue. It's not a once treatment, and then it lasts for the tree's lifetime. It is something that would have to be reinjected every two to three years in order to prevent it from coming on. So, I guess for us as a city is managing our own trees, whether it's boulevard trees, trees in the parks, we continue to monitor it. Whether it's our residents that are worried about what about the trees in their yards, I would encourage them to stay abreast with the Department of Agriculture, the DNR, and again, they can get to that through our website, through the forestry page, and as it unfolds, we'll certainly keep the council up to date. So, I'd pause for any questions on the, on the Emerald Ash Bor before I move on to the Japanese beetle.
Have we been strategic at all in trying to analyze what our vulnerability would be on city property? And the only one that comes to mind that would aesthetically hurt a particular property that the city owns would be the, the large ash when you drive into the Smith Douglas Moore House, the historic house that we own. If that were taken down, that would change, you know, the look of that historic property, and it's been there, we think, for about 80 to 90 years. So, have we identified any more like that, and would we strategically be ready to do something about that?
Yeah, if there are this, the, the trees that should be injected, they don't recommend that you start an injection until a tree has been discovered within 15-mile radius of you. And so, we're not quite there. We're fairly close. We can do that. You've probably read in the paper, there have been articles published and people estimating how many ash trees in each city. That is an estimation. Nobody has a real and full count. As I talked to both Jeff Cordis, our tree inspector, and also Stu Fox, about our vulnerability within the park system, the good news is, is most of our park system, especially where there's high tree content, is there naturally, and so it's a high variety of types of trees. And so, you may, we may lose quite a few trees, but it wouldn't mean that you would have kind of a lunar landscape look to it. We would still have other types of species that are there. Our challenge, and I think what some cities, like a Minneapolis-St. Paul, are somewhat bracing for, is if you have a significant number of trees dying and needing to be removed, our cost is going to come in a removal form, and it may be more than our current workforce can handle, which would mean some additional contracting dollars to be able to do that. And I think it would be a good idea to do that if it does hit, to be as aggressive as you can, because to, to keep it from spreading, that's one of the best ways, once it's hit, so we would-
Does the ash bore discriminate between white and green ash?
It does. The green ash, luckily, it's been quite a few years since that's been sold in nursery, local nurseries. They've gone away from that, and that's the one that's the most vulnerable and most susceptible, so that's helpful to us.
Other questions about the Emerald Ash Bor? Let's move on to the- Let's move on to the Japanese beetle update.
The Japanese beetle update, I mentioned before, we're seeing it in our park system pretty heavy this past year. And people are seeing it at their homes as well. And a lot of leaf damage, there's some row of lindens just on the west side across the street from Kroll On Track that got hit pretty hard. And I actually know somebody that lives over in that area, and their rose bushes were hit pretty hard, too, by the beetles, kind of a shiny green-looking small beetle. You've probably seen pheromone traps, kind of plastic bags, maybe about a half gallon inside hanging from trees. That's one way to combat that. What we learned this summer is places like Home Depot and Menards and garden stores ran out of them very fast. We were filling up that half gallon in about a half a day of hanging it in some of the trees in our parks. So, that was our best attempt to get as many as we could before they turned into grubs. What happened a few weeks ago, they turned into grubs, spent a lot of their time underground in the soil, and they feed on the roots. And so, that's where they can be very damaging to people's yards, especially nice manicured green bluegrass yards. So, if people are seeing turf damage, there's still an opportunity to get out there with an insecticide. I would recommend checking with your lawn and garden specialists, there's different kinds that you can use. We've noticed a couple of our soccer fields, some pretty big patches of turf. And so, we'll have to, we're treating it with the chemicals as best we can, but we'll be back out there adding some more seed and things. So, it does go in, in kind of peaks and valleys with their population growth. This is one of the worst years we've seen in Eden Prairie in quite a long time, and so hopefully their population drops off and isn't, isn't as bad. But it was certainly noticeable to the residents, we received quite a few calls. And that was, I think, because you can easily see the decimation to some of the trees. If it's a healthy tree, it's most likely going to come back next year, and it'll be fine, and it'll leaf out fine again. If it's a stressed tree, that may have taken its toll on it, and maybe it won't survive. But likely, most trees are going to survive. Most, the worst case then is you're going to see damage within your lawn that you'll probably be able to repair. It'll take some work to do, though.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Lothammer? Any other items of business to come before the council this evening? I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This meeting is adjourned.